Good evening. It's a pleasure to welcome you to our city council meeting this evening. We'll ask the city clerk to call the roll.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
Thank you very much. We're very pleased to have Pastor Tom Streeter of Grace Presbyterian Church here to offer, or to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and then to offer the invocation. So if you'd all remain, stand and remain standing for the invocation.
Let us begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Gracious God, we gather this evening to do the city's business, and as we gather, I ask that you give voice and clarity to those who will be presenting this evening, and I pray that you give listening ears to the council members. You indeed are moving within the city of Vista, and I thank you for this, and I ask that you would give us your eyes to see your presence and hearts to know what is important to you. Lord, may we care as you care, oh God. Amen.
We appreciate that. We also appreciate hearing it twice. Yes, Pastor Streeter, we do appreciate you coming and doing this. I know that you've been here and done this before, and it's really a service to the community and to the city council when you do come, so again, thank you. Approval of the agenda, are there any additions or deletions?
No mayor.
Okay. We had a closed session prior to the city council, and we'll ask the city attorney to please give a report on the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The closed session involved the three items shown on today's closed session agenda, numbers one, two, and three. No actions were taken that are required to be reported at this time.
Thank you. This is kind of a, probably a little sadness with this certificate of appreciation, but we're happy to issue the certificate of appreciation to a member of our Parks and Recreation Commission that's leaving us, and so we'd like to call Rona Roberts and Smith. Please come forward. As I said before, we appreciate your service and the work that you've done for the Parks and Recreation Commission, and we're certainly sad to see that you're leaving us. So with that, I'll offer this appreciation certificate. Thank you for your service. Okay. We did have a presentation scheduled from the North County Transit District, and I don't think the individual's here yet.
Yeah.
Oh, she is here?
No.
Okay. Yes or no? No. Okay. We'll postpone that. Okay. No, I know she's on her way and there's traffic. I can still hear myself over in the little room over there. I know. Is there something we can? Well, okay. We'll have to see what we can do to get it fixed tomorrow. Okay. Let's go on to the consent calendar. We have three items on the consent calendar tonight: the check register, the approval of minutes, and traffic signal, safety, light, maintenance service agreement. Are there any of these three that the council would like to remove from the consent calendar? Saying none, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move for approval of the consent calendar.
That's discussion item. Okay. We have a motion. Did we get a second?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Okay. And the consent calendar is adopted unanimously. Next, under discussion item number one is the Sandag 2050 Regional Growth Forecast. Mr. Conley.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This evening I have with me Ed Schaefer from Sandag. He'll be making a presentation for you.
Good afternoon. I'm Ed Schaefer. I'm the senior demographer at Sandag. Tonight, I will be presenting Sandag's efforts to produce a 2050 forecast. This presentation will take about 15 minutes. After the presentation, I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have. Here are the topics that we plan on covering tonight. Purpose of the 2050 forecast, some preliminary growth numbers from the region-wide forecast, a few specifics about Vista, and then a discussion of an issue we have with the housing unit capacity shortfall. Now, the goal of the Sandag forecasts are simple and straightforward. We wish to produce a region-wide forecast that is accurate, and to do that, besides working diligently on the forecast, we bring in experts in the areas of demography, economics, real estate, and statistical experts, and we create a technical advisory committee. And we, before we release the forecast, we vet it with these experts, and then we listen to them carefully, and we take all their, we take their advice, and then try to deal with all the issues they raise. And then the second goal is to, we want to produce a subregional forecast that is based upon the general plans and policies of the jurisdictions, as well as likely future development patterns that will allow us to accommodate all the projected growth in the region. Now, the forecast has many uses, but primarily it's the first building block for the regional transportation plan and the regional comprehensive plan. Now, besides those two plans, the forecast is also used by local jurisdictions for general plan updates, circulation elements, and traffic impact analysis. Finally, other regional agencies use our forecast for their planning and analysis. Probably the best example of this is the County Water Authority. They use our forecast as an input into their water demand forecast. And now, in addition to them, public health and public safety agencies also use the forecast for their planning efforts. Now, this slide depicts the, some of the preliminary results of our region-wide forecast. We expect population to grow by 1.3 million persons between now and 2050. That's the red line at the top. During the same period, we anticipate 400,000 additional housing units. That's the yellow line at the bottom. Finally, driving all this demographic growth will be an increase of 500,000 jobs within the region. That's the middle yellow line. Now, where's all this growth going to come from? Well, most of it is going to come from us. Nearly 20% of the growth between 2008 and 2050 will be due to natural increase, that is, the difference between births and deaths. As the data on the slide indicates, births within the region will level off at about 50,000 per year, while deaths will increase steadily over the 40-year period. Now, the increase in the number of deaths reflects the aging of the baby boom. Now, the births in this slide are the red line at the top and the deaths are the bluish line at the bottom. Now, in addition to natural increase, we'll also see some change due to migration, and this slide breaks migration into its two components. First, international migration, which is the movement of population between San Diego County and areas outside of the U.S., and then domestic migration, which is the movement of population between San Diego County and areas within the U.S. Now, as the slide shows, between now and 2050, international migration will contribute some of the growth to the region. However, domestic migration will be slightly negative over the course of the region. Now, as the population in our region grows, it's also going to get older. This can be seen by the, from the population pyramid on the slide. Now, the dark green bars represent today's population, while the light green bars illustrate the population in 2050. Now, the youngest ages are at the bottom, that's zero to four, five to nine, 10 to 14 on up, and with the oldest ages at the top. The oldest one is 85-plus. Males are shown on the left and females are shown on the right. As you can see, growth will occur across all ages for both genders, but most of the growth will occur in the oldest age groups, with half of the growth in ages 60 and older, and 10% of the change coming in the oldest age group, 85-plus. Now, this changing of the age structure of the population will have a major impact on the region. Many of the services that the older population will be demanding will evolve around housing and transportation, and we'll have to take this aging population into account as we plan for it. Now, once we arrive at our region-wide numbers, we distribute those numbers to subregional areas, and we do this by focusing on plans and policies of all the jurisdictions and also the transportation network. Now, we begin with what's on the ground today, and then we distribute expected future jobs based upon the current distribution of jobs and the distribution of lands that allow employment to occur. Then, based upon commuting times that we get from the transit, the transportation networks, we distribute the new housing units. Now, here's the problem. Since Series Nine in 1995, we've not had sufficient capacity in the plans of the jurisdictions to cite all the housing units that we anticipated coming to the region. So we assumed that these unsited households would live close to the region but outside the region, and would commute into the region as interregional commuters. However, recently, Senate Bill 375 directs us to at least theoretically provide for the siding of these units within the region. Now, you've heard me raise the terms "housing" and "job capacities," and I want to talk a little bit about how we determine those. First, again, we begin with what's on the ground today and verify this with your planning staff. Then we look at the general plans to determine what kinds of additional developments could occur based on these plans and the various constraints to development, such as habitat, steep slopes, floodplains, and local policies such as parking requirements, setbacks, and height limitations. Finally, we look at other considerations, such as the existence and location of areas in the city that are likely to redevelop and/or infill over the course of the forecast. Now, this is real important. When we do this, this takes us a while, this takes us a year or more to do, but when we do this, we work very closely with your planning staff, so we don't just do this in the ivory tower. We do it, we give it to the planning staff, ask for comments, then redo it. So it's a very iterative process. This slide sort of shows, gets to the problem that I was talking about. As you can see, in 2008, there were about 1.4 million jobs in the region, and as I said before, we expect about an additional 500,000 jobs over the course of the forecast. And we have room for an additional 900,000, so we've got, you know, an excess of incapacity of 400,000, and that's not a problem. We have plenty of room for jobs. Now, if you focus on the housing, in 2008, we had a little over 1.1 million housing units in the region, and we expect to add 450,000 over the course of the forecast, but we only have room for 380,000. So we've got a deficit in terms of housing capacity of 70,000 units. Now, it looks like a big number, and it is, 70,000 housing units is a lot, but, you know, I'd like to add, it's only 15% of the total change, so it's certainly a number that we can overcome. Now, this is to give you some idea about how this capacity and the shortfall distributes itself across the region. So this illustrates a map of housing unit capacity in 2008, and as you can see, most of the housing capacity is located in the center and south coastal areas of the region, with other capacity located in the, some in the north and on the east side. Okay, by 2030, we've lost a lot of the capacity because of the growth, but we're really beginning to lose a lot of capacity in the northwest quadrant of the region. By 2040, the northwest quadrant of the region is out of housing unit capacity. The center coastal area is almost out, and we have just a little bit in the south and the east. And then sometime between 2040 and 2050, we use up all the housing capacity in the region, so we're completely out. Now, one of the things I want to mention is that probably the most difficult thing that we try to do when we forecast is forecast changes the plans. In fact, we don't. We basically take your current plan and say, "This is your plan, we're going to model this plan." Now, we know that between now and 2050, a number of plans will change, but we don't know exactly how they will change, and so that's why we're coming to the cities now, is to seek your guidance on how we might move beyond your current horizon year and your plan into the 2050 forecast. Now, this gives you some information specifically about Vista. Right now, you have a little over 30,000 existing housing units, and you have planned capacity based upon your current plans of about 5,500 additional housing units. And also, you have about 40,000 jobs in the city with additional capacity for about 23,700 jobs. Now, we know we're asking a lot of you to look 40 years into the future, so to give you some idea about how much change that can occur over a period like that, we just wanted to show you what's happened in the last 40 years. So Vista itself has only been a city for a little over 40 years. It was incorporated in 1993. And in the past 40 years, the Vista Business Park has opened, the Moonlight Amphitheater has opened and been renovated, Vista Village was redeveloped, and the Sprinter service has begun. All this has happened in the last 40 years. And as you can see, the population in your city has increased quite a bit, around 20,000 to almost 100,000. Now, we've been working with the planning directors of the city for about a year now, and we've asked them to sort of help us decide what we need to do to get over the hump to get to the 2050 forecast horizon. And these are some of the suggestions that they've come up with. And so, we've been looking at these, and we want you to consider some of these when we ask for feedback from your city. In addition to these, we've also heard from the planning directors that we should pay attention to the smart growth areas, because we've put a lot of effort into creating the smart growth concept map, and the planning directors as a group said, you know, "We should use this in this situation." Here's a map of the current smart growth areas, and you can see that they're geographically distributed throughout all the jurisdictions in the region. Now, the reason why the smart growth area concept map is, gained a lot of favor with the planning directors, is that this is a proposal where one size doesn't have to fit all. In other words, each jurisdiction can develop its smart growth areas as it sees fit. Now, here's the smart growth areas for the north regional area, and then I'm going to focus in on the smart growth areas in the Chula-Vista area. I'm sorry. Beg your pardon. Now, right now, you have seven smart growth areas. One of them is either a current smart growth area or it's a planned smart growth area, and you have six others that are potential smart growth areas. And so, we think, or at least I think, that these areas could be areas you might want to look at for creating additional housing unit capacity for this forecast. Now, this is what we plan on doing over the next couple of months. Between now and, it says September, but it's going to be about the middle of October, we're going to visit all the city councils in the region and the board supervisors from the county. And then from that time until December, we're going to go ahead and move ahead with finishing the forecast and allocating the forecast down to the subregional areas. And then in January and February, we're going to take the forecast through our committees at Sandag, and then February, take it before the board for their consideration. So, the reason I came here tonight is to ask you to authorize your staff to continue to work with us in looking for these additional 70,000 housing units region-wide. And I want to say that, you know, the changes that we receive will be used in the latter years of the forecast, and that finally, we do this forecast, we update it every four years. So if you give us something, you said, "Go ahead and use this," and then three years from now, you look and say, "Well, you know, we shouldn't really have given this to them. We don't like it." You can take it back. This will not be written in stone. We're not asking you to change your plans right now, we're just basically asking you to help us, give us some guidance on how we can get over this 70,000 unit deficit. And with that, concluding my presentation, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the city council? This isn't a public hearing, but there are no. I take that back. Peggy Ramsey?
I'll be really brief. I know from the newspaper that the state government sends the population projections down to Sandag, and then it's up to Sandag to portion out the responsibility to the cities. So I can only echo what was written in the paper about County Supervisor Diane Jacob when she expressed concern about water. And if Sacramento won't send water to Southern California, I think it's going to be necessary to send the population to the great rivers in Northern California.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Campbell?
Well, Mrs. Ramsey, you and I hadn't talked about this, but that's my only really primary note to our planners in the Sandag is water. As we've all been at some level or another involved in that discussion, there's no really easy answers, and as you know, in Vista, we don't operate our own irrigation district. It's a separate agency unto itself. For 10 years, I was economic development director here, and before any major companies came in, I always wandered over to the water district and said, "Any problems supplying their neat? No, we'll just buy some more water." But there's an endpoint.
Right.
And we have to, I think, recognize that in our planning process and condition our expectations with the reality of water. We know it's taken quite a while for a desalination plant to be approved, and there's still concerns about its impacts on the ocean and that type of thing. So I'm hoping that Sandag will definitely engage the water people in this whole discussion because it concerns a lot of us as to that endpoint. I'm seeing neighborhoods go brown because of the conditions today. I'm seeing, I think that deteriorates property values. I see Las Vegas, new developments going in with virtually no landscaping, and that's not necessarily a pretty face. And I know we're a desert, but I didn't see us go back to that, so we have some interesting challenges facing us. One opportunity that I think this council is very much aware of, and I think the timing of your speaking first before North County Transit is excellent, because we have a transit corridor in the form of the Sprinter that I'm not sure that we ever anticipated that this would become an opportunity for people to live near transit, good transit, and then get to work. And the North County Transit and its planning hopes to take that from a 30-minute time between trains to maybe 15 minutes over time, which will make it far more convenient and more beneficial to the public at large. And being in the middle of the North County area physically, I think is a great opportunity for Vista, but it needs to be done wisely because if you look at the experience of transit corridors in other parts of the country, sometimes it ends up being a negative impact on crime and difficulties that we just certainly need to look at with a mix and maintain a very positive mix there. So I appreciate your bringing this forward today, and I know Mr. Conley's very aware of these issues.
Thank you. Council, the request to speak, screen up here isn't working, so if you just please raise your hand when you want to speak. I think Mr. Gronky was first.
First of all, I want to just reiterate what Mr. Campbell said about our transportation corridor. We've already decided as a council to increase the density along our Santa Fe corridor. So, and I talked to Mr. Conley about that, and I don't think that's going to meet the needs of our city, though, right? That won't meet our housing needs.
For this next round of our housing element, it actually will meet the requirements that we have, so the downtown-specific plan, which we're hoping to bring forward to the council the beginning of next year, will provide for mixed-use opportunities just in the downtown and Santa Fe areas, and that will be sufficient to meet our housing element needs for this last round. The next projection that our needs will be based on is this one that they're preparing right now, so we need to probably account for the other growth that we're anticipating as part of the general plan update. We expect to bring a workshop to the council here in the fall to talk about the land use element and what changes we're proposing as part of the general plan update, and once the council gives the nod to those, any of those growth areas, then we'll present those to Sandag as well for their inclusion in their projection.
So they were conducive with what we saw on the map right now for the smart growth areas?
Yes. They have the information from the downtown, the areas outside the downtown that are part of the general plan update or what we need to get council feedback before we provide that to Sandag.
Okay. Okay. A question I have deals with demographics. I think I read somewhere where there's a lot more people living alone now, more singles than families. Is that taken into account in your housing element?
Yes. Yes, it is, yeah. And you're actually going to see a lot more of that as the baby boom ages more, because unfortunately, men die off before women, and so you tend to find a lot more single-person households because of widowhood. So we'll see an increase in single persons.
So Sandag going to take a lead in the type of housing that we, you might consider available, you know, would be most suitable for that type of future generation? Or no? The private sector will take care of it itself?
Yeah. Right. Private sector.
Okay. Mr. Lopez?
We are going a little higher density in the corridor here in Vista, and it will create better numbers than you're looking for. But there's also water in that corridor, a lot of water underneath, 18 feet underneath. There's a huge river running underneath Santa Fe, because they've tested it, and it's there. Has there, maybe this is for John, a question for John. Has there ever been any kind of study or anything talked about possibly bringing a pipeline instead of desalination, just a plain line, water line, from the ocean to cities like Vista to San Marcos where we can hook up for fires, for an emergency for fires? Has there been any talk on that? Or will that water destroy the piping, the plastic lines nowadays, or has there been any talk about that?
Yeah, I'm not aware of any discussions to have any system like that.
Has Sandag ever?
No, I'm not aware of anything like that.
Nothing like that?
Uh-uh.
pipeline instead of desalination, just a plain line, water line, from the ocean to cities like to Vista, to San Marcos where we can hook up for fires, for an emergency for fires? Has there been any talk on that? Or will that water destroy the piping, the plastic lines nowadays, or has there been any talk about that?
Yeah, I'm not aware of any discussions to have any system like that.
Has Sandag ever?
No, I'm not aware of anything like that.
Nothing like that?
Mm-mm.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, well, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I believe our North County Transit District representative has arrived, so if you'd please come forward. And Bob, would you like to make the introduction?
Mayor, thank you very much. I'd very much like to introduce Julie Austin, our Director of Strategic Planning for North County Transit Systems. She came from prior life at Foothill Transit, which Mr. Piper is very familiar with and still provides good service to, I think. Julie is going to make a presentation about the mobility plan that North County Transit's underway with right now and you can use the podium if you like. Julie, would you rather sit here?
No.
Rather sit there? Okay, good. Do we have visuals for? Just to our audience, I'd point out that like every other agency in the state, North County Transit is suffering from takeaways from the state government. They've taken away all public funding of transit from the state. So we rely on property tax, we're relying on sales tax to provide operations. We've made cuts in service, we've increased fares, and we're having serious impacts on those people who really rely on public transit to get to work or have normal lives. And it's not done yet. So in order to try and optimize the situation, we've undertaken a very considerable expense to analyze what we can do to provide the optimum amount of service in the forthcoming years. And the only way that's going to work is if the public and each of the communities we serve gets involved in that plan. And so that's what Ms. Austin is here tonight to tell us about what the plan is, how it's being implemented, and how the community can become involved.
Thank you. And I apologize for being late.
Come in, close to me.
Hi, thank you for having me here this evening. This will be a brief presentation. I'd like to tell you a little bit about maybe where we start talking about the whole event. We are fortunate. Thank you. We're fortunate to be governed by a group of leaders representing eight cities in the North County as well as the county of San Diego. Mr. Campbell represents your city, as you know. We have a huge service area. A thousand square miles is three times bigger than the transit agency Foothill Transit that I worked at before. The challenges in meeting the needs of the various communities in this region are immense. But we're lucky because we have an integrated transit network. We have four modes of service, including the Lyft, Paratransit. We're fortunate to have the Coaster up and down the coast, the Sprinter that Mr. Campbell mentioned, and the Breeze bus service, which are the green lines throughout this map. In 2009, the fiscal year just ending, we carried 12.6 million passengers. Of those, the Breeze carried 8.8 million, the Sprinter 2.2 million, and the Coaster 1.5 million. Most people think that the Coaster is our most heavily-used route, but as you can see, the bus service gets a lot of attention from the North County customers. We have eight routes that run through Vista as well as the Sprinter. We have access to Vista Village Center, North County Square, North County Superior Court, and the Vista Business Park. We have four Sprinter stops in the Vista area and we have connectivity to long-distance transit provided through Amtrak, MetroLink, as well as the Coaster. As previously mentioned, we're about to change. Because of our significant financial challenges, we've really undertaken a massive reexamination of our system and the mobility plan that we're undertaking here is one of the primary components of that. In addition, the Sprinter has already been in operation for a year and since we haven't done any major overhaul or comprehensive look at the system in seven years, it's certainly overdue. So the Board of NCTD gave us our marching orders last spring and they directed us to create a sustainable plan that grows ridership and revenue through an introduction of innovative transit services, collaborative partnerships, and a reevaluation of service connections to bus rapid transit and interregional services. The goals of the study are to increase ridership and revenue, to support robust economic activity, which we haven't seen in a while, comprehensive land use, and to increase mobility, and of course, to protect our environment and enhance our quality of life. Two primary objectives are part of this study and reshaping the way NCTD provides its service is one of those. We're fortunate to have the Coaster and Sprinter that we can build on as we reexamine the bus service and try and make it more market-focused. We want to look at major employer centers and see why the employees are not taking the bus and how can we make it more convenient? How can we connect to the major trunk lines to make it more convenient? We wanted to look at bus rapid transit initiatives where appropriate and develop partnerships with communities to provide shuttles. The Vista Village is one that we may be meeting with staff to discuss how can we connect up with that better. As we do this, obviously, we're going to develop options to make our transit network more efficient and effective to meet the travel needs of the North County and key regional connections. We need to prioritize the service for the key corridors and also, this is going to require a lot of demographic analysis so that we can recognize the different needs of each We're just about done with the comprehensive analysis of the key demographic indicators, the market or community assessment, and the consultant tells me. And we're working with TMD, a Carlsbad-based consultant, to do this plan. We'll be looking at the preliminary draft within the next two weeks. It's our intent to coordinate with all of the major planning efforts and get involved with the cities as you revise your general plans and there are certain new legislative requirements with respect to carbon footprints that we can probably help you with. So we offer ourselves to meet with your city staff to that end. The 2050 Long Range Transportation Plan, that was a great presentation and we plan to stay involved with that. To the extent that we can create partnerships to maximize the public benefit, I'll give you an example of one that we have right now in the tribal area. We have a grant-funded Route 388 that, in partnership with the tribes out there. So they subsidize the route to serve casinos out there and I think there's lots of missed opportunities like that that we could be looking at, as well as we don't necessarily have to run buses every day. We can run buses Tuesdays and Thursdays if they're going to meet specific needs. So everything's on the table and we can come up with some really creative ideas through this public participation process. In the past, I'm new to the area, but I guess there's been some criticism and we haven't been perceived as the strongest partner. We want to change that. We want to be perceived as listeners. We want to be responsive and we want to partner with government, organizations, cities, businesses, customers, and potential customers as we look toward the future. So we're asking lots of questions. We're asking what changes in our services could be made to better serve your constituencies? What are the key attributes you would encourage your constituents? What are the key attributes that we can offer from our system that would encourage your constituents to use our transit system? What areas are we doing well? Where are we performing well and what do we need to modify or build on? What are the mobility needs that are our first priority for the transit service, given the fact that we are not exactly awash in cash? And what kind of partnership opportunities would the city support? We're asking this of organizations, of businesses. We have three sets of workshops, key groups, and in the Leadership Policy Group, Councilman Campbell is a member of that. We'll be holding another meeting of that in October and we're trying to finalize the dates right now. We'll be holding our second round of meetings in all of these. The Business Subcommittee is Paul O'Neill from the Vista Chamber participated in our last Business Subcommittee. We got a lot of great feedback. Patsy Chow and Kevin Hamm attended the Technical Committee and gave a lot of good input and we hope to have additional meetings with them. As I said, these meetings will be held again in October. We're also doing, we're going to kick off the public workshops concurrent with those. Those will be evening workshops at various venues. And community outreach and presentations, the sky's the limit, as many as we can do. Whoever invites us, we'll get somebody out there to speak to your individual group. And we're also doing electronic surveys via a special website that's currently being vetted by everybody and should be up and running within the next week. We're going to have an employee survey as well as a public survey. The employee survey is going to have the added benefit of free tickets to see life for the first hundred respondents. So, this summer and through the fall, we'll be continuing our data collection and research. We'll be doing these surveys and additional outreach through the fall and possibly winter. The formal meetings will continue, as I said, the second meeting will have some more concrete stuff to talk about at the second meeting. The first meetings, we got a lot of ideas from people and we've summarized those and all of the comments will be on our website. And the third meeting, we'll have some proposed service plans. Initially, we planned to have this all wrapped up by November, but we've moved it out to April because, April or so, because we really feel that we can't do this in a vacuum and there's so many different interests to be addressed and listened to that there's no reason to rush it. So, as soon as the mobility plan link is up, you'll be able to link it directly from our website at GoNCTD.com. And then that will give you all the information you need to participate in the workshops and surveys. For additional information, all of my contact information is included here and I would be happy to entertain any questions.
Counsel, the speaker request is working now, so if you have any questions, please. Okay, Mr. Gronky?
Thank you. Did I understand that you said those 2.2 million riders on the Sprinter doesn't work?
Did you hear that question?
Yes.
Okay.
For 2009.
For 2009. So it's been a successful year then?
Yes, and actually, we're getting some preliminary data in because we're doing a free rides-to-college promotion and our ridership deboardings at the Palomar Station doubled over April of this past year. So the promotion appears to be working.
And that will move on for how long?
It'll be going on through the end of next week. It started this Monday.
I just want to historically say some things about the Sprinter. I remember my campaign back in 2000 when we campaigned on the issue of having overpasses everywhere because we felt that the train was going to impact our traffic, but I must commend you on the traffic is hardly impacted. I mean, it does back up a little bit, but the passing of the trains is pretty quickly. So, thank you. It's not an imposition on our city as much as we anticipated it would have been.
Good, good.
Talking about imposition though, I've had this asked me several times of people within our neighborhoods and I know for a fact from a past job I had that large buses can really tear up a street, a small city street, you know, not a main thoroughfare. So is there any kind of thought of bringing smaller buses into these neighborhoods because really it impacts not only the roads, but some of the quiet feeling of the neighborhoods?
I'm really glad you asked that question because that's a key element that was missing from this presentation, but that is one of the visions that we have is to, you know, we see a lot of 40-foot buses that are not near capacity and certainly, driving here, I was thinking that very same thing because I came down a narrow street. We're planning to, as part of this, look at how many smaller buses we need to put out there to meet demand and avoid tearing up city streets as well. So yeah, we're definitely looking at that.
Okay. And I know Mr. Chuck Grable's in the crowd right now and he's brought this issue up a number of times about bringing some type of shuttle bus to our business park because really the Sprinter's kind of a backbone, but it is placed where it is and it doesn't reach some of our major population and work careers.
I know that was discussed at our Technical Committee meeting and we stand ready to meet, to discuss that.
Okay. And finally, we just heard from Sandag that there's going to be a huge explosion of senior citizens. It would seem to me that you need to be moving in that direction too, somehow outreach through some type of program. I know in the city, we have through our out and about program, a very effective way to reach our senior citizens and get them throughout their city. I was wondering if maybe public transportation might be able to take it over, if not in our city and other cities. I think it'd be a kind of a nice niche for you to get into.
Well, we offer the Lyft service, which is senior and disabled service certification. And you're right, it has a big population and it's one that's not going to be overlooked as we look at the demographics.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Is it working?
It's working, okay. Okay, Mr. Lopez?
Thank you. When I, the first time I ran, I supported the Sprinter and that was when they were talking about all the money, how much it was going to cost and this and that. And I so supported it at that time because I felt that that was where the future is here in North County, especially in your bigger cities, that's how they get around. And so I have a lot of faith that it will continue to get even more ridership on that Sprinter. But I also predict that our downtown Vista will grow tremendous in the years to come. And I also predict that our industrial area will become a higher-density area too. And that will bring more jobs and the Sprinter will be a good part, it will be a part in that. And because hopefully by then, we will have buses maybe, or some type of system going from the Sprinter out there on a rotation, you know, in the morning and in the evening. And I think it would be a great opportunity when that time comes that we look into all of that and do something about it because then we get people off the road.
Exactly.
And so, and that's part of it. And even with the economy, the way it's going now, you see less people on the road today than you did a few years back. And I think your numbers are up with the Sprinter. When it first went in, gas was $5 a gallon and it was packed and you had double, you doubled up that Sprinter. Now you've cut back a little because maybe gas is not, well, it's not as high as it was. And so, but in the future, I think it's going to be, it's a plus for us and for our area and I'm glad it's there. But one of the things that people would complain about is the noise of the horn. To me, and I live right next to it, it really doesn't bother me. What bothers me is the freight that comes at 2:00 in the morning, which is making all the noise, the freight. Thank you.
Freight operates under a totally different set of rules than the Sprinter, which is called light rail. And the federal government, FRA, requires that we be at so many decibels on, it's 85 decibels for the Sprinter and it goes considerably more, I think, for the heavy rail. They also specify the frequency of the times that the horns are blown. We've commented to our contractors operating the service that they could be a little more gentle on duration of the horns so that they don't wake people up at 5:00 in the morning.
Does that wake you up?
So I apologize for that, but we have basic rules and I think the staff understands that and are trying to adhere to it.
Well, with that, when we developed that corridor, the Santa Fe corridor, that horn blows at 1:00, we're going to have... blows at 1:00, we're going to have a lot of people mad at you.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, if there are no further questions, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Item D2, which is the Fiscal Year 2009-2010 Capital Improvement Program Budget Amendment. Mr. Pierce.
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. I'm Larry Pierce, I'm the Director of Engineering. With me tonight is Sudi Soja, which is the Assistant Director of Engineering, and she will be making the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Counsel approved the 2009-2010 Capital Improvement Program for about $100 million on February 10, 2009, and approved an amendment on June 23, 2009, to add a community development project. Tonight, the staff recommends revisions to six projects. West Vista Way Widening Project is one of the six projects that the design for improvements of this project from Thunder to Melrose has been completed. Sewer plans for this project are near completion and will be constructed in the near future as a separate project. The overall construction cost of project, including right-of-way costs, is over $25 The San Diego Association of Governments, or Sandec, has advised that its fiscal policies do not allow the city to program any funds for right-of-way acquisition or construction until the project is modeled for compliance with the San Diego County air quality standards and is fully funded for construction. Therefore, it is recommended to create five new projects with shorter segments with construction costs that range from about $3 to $8 million. It is also recommended to separate the two safety projects that are funded through federal grants for auditing purposes. City has received two federal earmark grants for a total of $820,000 that need to be appropriated to this project. City has also received $1,457,000 in additional transnet funding from Sandec as part of the American Resource Recovery Act that needs to be appropriated into the, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Which is going to be appropriated into the street rehabilitation project. City staff have been successful in obtaining several grants from the Sandec Transportation Development Account that include $500,000 towards the right-of-way engineering for inland rail trail project, $146,844 for sidewalk improvements around California Avenue and Calle Chapultepec adjacent to the Boys and Girls Club, $50,648 for construction of Longhorn Drive pedestrian improvement that will include curb extensions and pedestrian refuge medians at the intersection of Longhorn Drive and Promontory Ridgeway. To start the process for changing the name of the Scandido Avenue to Civic Center Drive, a new project is proposed to be added to the CIP program. This project will provide for design and construction of four ground-mounted directional signs and two informational signs along State Route 78 in compliance with Caltrans encroachment permit requirements. Adoption of the recommended changes will increase the 2009-2010 appropriations in the amount of $1,740,465, bringing the total to over $102 million. The increase in appropriation is the result of the new grants and the federal stimulus funds, and therefore, staff recommends that the City Council approve the proposed amendment to City's current CIP budget.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the Counsel to Staff? Mr. Gronky?
Can you go back a slide or two? There was something about $1.4 million from Sandec for street improvements, and there was several streets, yeah. So this represents what, then, curbs and gutters or?
This is street resurfacing.
Resurfacing.
And also wheelchair ramps, 57 wheelchair ramps along the, yes, at the corners, and some crosscutters.
And this is work that's been done already, or this has been appropriated?
We have advertised the project, and we have received bids. However, the second low bidder has protested the bid, so our city attorney's office is evaluating them.
Okay, thank you.
We're hoping to bring those bids to the Council September 22 for a ward of bid.
Okay, are there any of the questions from Counsel? If not, is there a motion to approve the item?
I've moved to approve it.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion, a second, please cast your votes. Okay, and that item passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item is the Regional Pension Standards. Mrs. Gilder.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Last fall, the League of California Cities San Diego Division had requested the City Managers Group to review pension standards that we currently have countywide and to come back with some recommendations on some potential changes. This was prompted by a number of issues, mainly recognizing the need for fiscal sustainability on the current plans, as well as the growing momentum from the San Diego issue throughout the state of looking at their plans and having a lot of notoriety built into that, the recession, and also the losses that Calpers sustained, $60 to $80 billion, depending on when, which report you're looking at. Calpers also announced that there would be substantial increases, and so at that same time, right when we knew that our sales tax, profit taxes, our items that sustain our general fund would be decreasing, and we're not quite sure how low they'll go, but, and not recover at a very fast pace. So the request was for the City Managers Group to look at what options would be available, make some recommendations for discussion. Those, a variety of options were presented to the San Diego League of California Cities Division on August 10. And at that meeting, it was unanimous consent to ask each of the cities to discuss this item and to look at, are you interested in sending your representative, which in this case would be Mayor Protem Campbell, back to the League Division and say, yes, our city is interested in discussing these items? And it's for discussion purposes, and I think one of the things that was really important to note is that the discussion part is extremely important, but at any level throughout all of these, these plans and items, is that each city would have to then negotiate the issue. The main reason that San Diego League of California Cities Division wanted to have as much of a consensus within the 18 cities as possible was because they wanted to look at the uniformity, not being able to have one city go into changes and then all the rest of them not, and then they would not be able to attract and retain good personnel. They wanted to look at it as, on a regional basis, that if the region went together and banded together and looked at uniform changes, realizing, again, each one has to be negotiated by each city, and they wouldn't be exactly the same, but if they were moving towards a regional standard plan, that it would be much better. An example that the state provides is they said that there isn't the same problem in STIRS, that PERS, you know, recreated the issue, if you're a teacher in Eureka or a teacher in Los Angeles, that you have the same pension plan. You don't have, you know, a variety of options on pension plans. However, within PERS and with the local government, you have the option for a variety of plans, so it would, you know, piggyback, if one received better, you really needed to keep up with your neighbors to get, attract good people and sustain them and retain them. So they're looking at uniformity. The request from, from the League Division was to state, are all the cities willing to discuss entering into further discussions with each of their bargaining units for some type of standard plans, which taking, rolling them back for the most part to the 1999 plans prior to the enhanced plans? And would you look, would you be interested in looking at that for, on a regional basis? That's primarily the issue I think everybody is aware of, of the reasons why, and it's not that, you know, anybody wants to affect anybody, it's just that right now and for the foreseeable future, what we have in place is not sustainable fiscally. Plans, I mean, the rate increases that the, that PERS mentioned last week, up until last week, we were, all agencies were told that our rates were going to go up anywhere, in two years, we're going to go up approximately 5% to 10%, which is a really huge jump, and considering your payroll. Last week, the, most of you read the news article where they stated for miscellaneous employees, it was between 7% and 12% increase over what we already pay, and for public safety, 15% to 25% increase. What we have now is not, well, the rate we pay now, we're not able to, I'm not quite sure how we're going to continue that. If we have an increase like, well, if we're going to have an increase in two years, it's just a matter of what that increase will be. How will we sustain that? We're not sure. So those were the main issues, and trying to look at, the two key components are that these have to be negotiated, but the most important component is it affects no current employees whatsoever. It's future employees. You also don't realize cost savings on most of these items that are mentioned here. The very first item that, the reason I got drafted in the group to help out is I said, Vista always, they always seem to forget that Vista, for five years, our employees stepped up to the plate right away and immediately, with any enhanced plan, paid for all, their full share of their employee premium. It was unheard of in the region, they still do it, and, and so I kept saying, they said, well, everybody needs to do this, so we already do it, we've already had it. Our employees really took the hit early on. So it was savings for those plans immediately. The region is now, we're seeing a number of the cities have negotiated this in the last several months of employees sharing in their premiums. And the next step that they were looking at is that, do most of the cities want to go to the, or would they go to two-tier rate? Would they consider negotiating it and looking at the second-tier rate for new employees? Savings on that wouldn't be realized for a number of years, but it's a step in the right direction. Primarily, the League asked each city again to say, is each city willing to discuss this? And do you think it's a good idea to discuss pension reform and report that, those findings back to the League at their special meeting they're calling October 12?
Okay, Mr. Campbell?
Well, just to reiterate, we're not affecting any current employees, so if they're, it should, and that, that's not to say that there's any thing we're voting on tonight that in fact does make any change. All we're doing is saying we're willing to talk. Is that what I understand?
What you're, what you're, what you're, the consensus they're looking for is, are you willing to discuss it at, on a regional basis? Do you think a regional plan on a two-tiered system is a good idea? And if so, they would regionally look at that and saying that, then please go back and negotiate that sometime in the future with your bargaining units. They would also look at taking that to the state, to the League of California Cities, because we've had nine regions contact the League and other groups to say, our group, our region wants to also draft something similar and go forward supporting the same type of idea.
But each city will retain its autonomy in making a decision.
And, yes, absolutely, they have to.
The League, I don't believe, could impose any such?
The League cannot, and that's not even what we're, what they're asking or recommending, or is being recommended.
Because I, I think all of us appreciate the, not only the leadership here that you've shown, Ms. Gilder, and of course, Mr. Van Sisfoya, but the employees standing up and understanding the situation that we faced financially, it's not gotten better, but taking a part in their own future benefits program. I think that's really great that that's been recognized and they participate in that. I, I think that this nation and this state, certainly in particular, is on, looking down a tunnel with multiple train wrecks. I was reading that Medicare is going to, at the current rate and projection, expire in funds in 2018, and what was almost more distressing is that Medicare, as it stands today, is eating up 12% of the gross domestic product, a phenomenal, phenomenal amount of money. San Diego, I think, is $1 billion, at least in the whole, in terms of their pension decisions. I don't know how they're going to dig their way out of that, but to be fiscally responsible, I don't know why we wouldn't be willing to talk and get a better understanding of the possible ramifications of the two-tiered system, and I would support that.
And I think San Diego also, the city of San Diego and the county of San Diego already negotiated the two-tiered system for new employees. They went to that earlier this year. And I think one of the main components, too, is that between the San Diego County Taxpayers Association, who's sounded the alarm and had a number of articles that have concern, as well as the California Fiscal Reform, Pension Reform Group, that have, they have a petition and they have started to look to get a ballot measure on for November 2010 that would be fairly draconian, it's a very drastic change, and we don't think that that's appropriate going to that lower level that they're recommending for public service employees.
If I may, Mayor, I'd go on record in saying that I would not support anything that affected current employees, because they have made commitments to mortgages and living here, they've moved here, they have, they've developed their family here, but new employees would have a choice as to where they locate and live, and I don't think that's going to affect them in any way as current employees, so I think we should be talking about our future, but not affecting our current employees.
Mr. Lopez.
Ms. Gilder, when did you roughly say that this would take effect if they went ahead with this? How long would this process be?
It's whenever it's negotiated.
Could it be another year or two?
Certainly. There's not a time for, not a timeframe attached to it, it's just a request for a discussion for the, to move towards a two-tiered system regionally.
Well, as long as it doesn't affect the current, you know, with the new ones that are coming in, you know, because of the way the, I agree with Bob, the things he was saying is that the way our economy is, the way things are in our country and all over the world, that we have to look at things and renegotiate, in my business, running different specials semi, because we have to, because it's just difficult times, and so, and the only way you're going to learn and go forward is by sitting down and discussing it and deciding which way we're going to go to get by with whatever type of business or decision we make in these times, because it is difficult. As long as, you know, like Bob said, go on record, as long as it doesn't bother the president, I'm okay with it.
Thank you. You know, I have to agree with Mr. Campbell. I think that times have changed so dramatically in terms of retirement systems for the private sector as well as for the public sector. Public sector retirement systems have just spiraled up over the last 20, 25 years to a point where they're significantly higher and significantly more costly than on the private sector. Most of the private sector now is on a defined contribution system, whereas ours is a defined benefit program. I know when I was serving on the board of the San Diego Regional Airport Authority, which, and most of the board members were local businessmen in the San Diego County area. And... which, and most of the board members were local businessmen in San Diego County area. And theirs, and it was actually the San Diego City Retirement System that managed the airport retirement system, which was not a good thing to have happen, but it was separate, and so we were able to maintain the integrity of the Airport Authority. But what I wanted to say is that those gentlemen were very anxious to see us go to a defined, a contribution program rather than a defined benefit program. And I think that's what public agencies are going to face in the next few years, is that they're going to be, there's a lot of pressure to go to a defined contribution rather than a defined benefit. And I think, I personally have never been in favor of a defined, defined contribution simply because of the fact that a defined benefit program is better managed. And the purpose of having a retirement system is to be able to provide for your employees in the long term after they leave, after they leave their employment. It's almost within the private sector that those retirement systems have faded away and are continuing to fade away without them being able to take advantage or to provide for what they need to have to live out the rest of their lives. So I think there's something that we need to do, and this two-tier is a first step. And I think we need to look at that, and I think that we need to, to take this opportunity to begin the discussions so that we can get out of this fiscal dilemma that we constantly have because of these spiraling retirement costs. Mr. Gronky?
Thank you, Mayor. I tend to disagree with my colleagues up here, and there's several reasons for that.
Thank you. First of all, being a teacher, I don't get paid that well, as many people know, but I do rely on my, my benefit package, and particularly my retirement package as being an incentive. And so I think there's a lot of people out there that do that, and I think that if we begin to take that away, we begin to take away the security that many people have in this nation right now. And unfortunately, as the private sector goes to defined contributions, I think we found after the last recession that anybody that has a 4K program realizes exactly what defined contributions will mean for your future. I think we're going to find ourselves in trouble. Right now, more and more of the private sector is getting into, just letting employees go, not providing any kind of benefits for them, and we all end up paying for it. There's a big discussion in this nation right now over healthcare, which we're all going to pay for because the corporations aren't paying for it. And so I just disagree with, completely with this, because I think that what we're going to do by setting up a two-tier system is we're going to set up a future conflict between the employee sectors, those that have a good retirement package and those that don't, and they're going to be negotiating for different reasons, and it's just going to create a conflict within our ranks. And I just don't think that's a good idea.
Anyone else? Judy?
Yes, I'll chime in, because I come from, I come from Michigan, and I think that's one of the problems with General Motors. A lot of my friends retired, you know, at 50 years old with 95 percent of their salary, and I think that then they can't sustain, that the companies can't sustain those retirement benefits and health benefits that they get. So there's got to be an answer, but the, the, the public sector, or the private sector, rather, they don't have the benefits like the, like all of the teachers and all the public sector does. So, you know, and when you work at a job, if you start at your 20 and you work for 25 years, you're 45 or 50, and you retire at 95 percent of your salary, I don't know how that we can sustain that, how, because everybody's living longer. That means for the next, you know, because everybody lives to 75 or 80, not everybody, but a lot of people do, you know, then for all those years, you're getting almost all of your salary. So I don't know, I have mixed feelings on how we can sustain that. You know, so I...
Okay, what's the council's direction to the city manager?
Well, I'd move for staff recommendation that this be discussed by the League of Cities and that more data, examples, and that type of thing be provided back to the council. So we'll have, be better informed on what the ramifications would be, should a second-tier ever be considered, because we'd have to, of course, do that anyway, but provide more information and get a report back from the League after they've had their discussions. And see if we want to see it any further.
Do we have a second to that motion? Okay, we have a motion second. Any further discussion? Lopez? No? If you'd like to speak, I don't have a speaker's, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Abel. Please come forward, Mr. Abel, I do have your, your thing here.
Is this on? Yes.
Yes, sir.
Just a number of things. First of all, I'd like to get some facts on the table. I went to the CalPERS website and searched retirees in Vista, and we've got one retiree that's over $150,000 and two others on the range of $120,000, just a fact. The public sector union has got, the unions have, have the power. Look at the recall going on in Oceanside. Look at the fact that in the last election, general election, the Vista firefighters ponied up the majority of the campaign funds. The firefighters and the other unions were a major player behind the passage of Prop L. One thing you might think about, I would, certainly I'm going to push it, is that any and all candidates need to make a pledge not to accept public sector union money for the simple reason of the built-in conflict of interest. Maybe we could have changed, changed the election ordinance to that effect. There's nothing in my mind that says that you couldn't do this on your own last year, the year before, when the handwriting was on the wall then, and has been ever since. It's, it's nice that you could get the political cover of the organizations that you belong to, but it's not necessary. You can step forward and do this tomorrow. And there's no reason why the defined benefits option shouldn't, shouldn't have been considered in, but then again, this is, this organization is public servants, if you will. Nobody likely in the private sector. The, the early retirement is absolutely bananas. That, you know, to retire it with $100,000 at age 55, that's, you know, that, God bless them, but we can't afford that. The current situation without question is unsustainable, and maybe instead of the, the regional city managers looking into this thing, maybe the grand jury should, should be polled on it. Thank you, folks.
Mr. Gronky?
Thank you. I'd like to respond to two things that Mr. Abel just said. First of all, this distortion that everybody's making oodles of money on retirement is just not true. Yes, there are some anomalies of managers and captains or whatever they may be who are making over $100,000, but most people making retirements are only making maybe $40,000, $30,000. It's livable, it's not extravagant. The second thing is I'm tired of unions being bashed. Unions are not the only special union, special interest group out there. There are large developers, there's government groups, there's all kinds of different things out there. Just because the unions want to participate doesn't make them bad.
Okay, I think I got a motion in a second on this. Does that motion in a second still stand? Mr. Lopez?
Who did the second, was the second?
Judy Ritter.
Go ahead.
Okay, then please cast your votes. Okay, that passes with Vance, Ritter, and Campbell voting yes, and Gronky and Lopez voting no. Thank you. Okay, the last item that we have on the agenda is a public hearing, which is the Regional Transportation Improvement Plan Amendment. Mr. Pierce?
Sandeg develops and adopts the Regional Transportation Improvement Program, which is referred to as RTIP every two years. The RTIP includes all the proposed major highways, arterials, our transit, and bikeway projects. Sandeg also requires that agencies include all of their projects that will be paid for with Transnet funds in the RTIP. On May 26th of this year, the council adopted the current Transnet Local Streets and Roads Program for the projects in fiscal years 2009 through 2013. That was an amendment. So every quarter, Sandeg allows us to adopt a new amendment, and that's what I will talk about tonight. A little earlier, we had, and you had passed the CIP budget amendment, and that identified several projects that were changing funding or we were adding projects. We recommend that updating the 2008 RTIP to match those projects in the CIP as well as the funding in this current CIP amendment, and that so that those projects can be eligible to receive funding through Sandeg. Exhibit four in your agenda package shows all six CIP projects that need adjustments to the programming of the RTIP. The amendment includes some new projects that we've already talked about, which was West Vista Way and the Highway 78 Civic Center Guide Signs. We're also reprogramming and adding money for what we call Prop A Sales Tax or the Transnet Local Funds to match the CIP budget. And those also include, the projects that those include is, again, the West Vista Way Project, the Inland Rail Trail Thibodeau Road and curb landscaping project, the Street Rail Bellotation Program that you, we will be hopefully awarding next month, and the Highway 78 Civic Center signs. We have also have new Federal Consolidated Appropriation Act grant money. That's earmarked funds that Senator Issa secured. That was in the last amendment, in the May amendment, but because of the West Vista Way project being so large, we could not get that appropriated, and that's why one of the reasons that we split the project, so now that we can appropriate it. So we are asking you to adopt that also tonight again. And then lastly, we have, we need to program the new Sandeg Transportation Development Act Grant Funds, or referred to as TDA funds, for the community development projects for the Boys and Girls Club, the Townsite Drive, and the Longhorn and North Emerald Drive projects. Sandeg requires that the local agency conduct a public hearing to receive comment on the city's proposed use to the RTIP funds. Staff recommends that council receive any public comment on the amended RTIP project list, adopt the resolution for the city's updated Transnet Local Streets and Roads Program for projects for fiscal years 2009 through 2013. And that concludes my report.
This is a public hearing. The public hearing is open. I do not have any requests to speak from the audience. Is there anything that the council would like to ask, or comment made? Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Pierce, I, within the Transnet funding, there's a breakout of percentages that go here, there, and everywhere, and part of that is, I've seen in recent meetings, has been going to bikeways, which I think is a wonderful thing to have, and I see some references to bikeways here in Vista, particularly with the rail trail. But the question I asked at Sandeg, and they were able to give a clear answer, was that there's no monies anywhere except from local government to maintain these, these wonderful bikeways. And I'm wondering if we can build in, in the rail trail and some of the other projects that relate to bikeways, some sort of a sinking fund that would allow us to maintain them for a period of time. I proposed in, just for reference to my councilmates, that there'd be a fee imposed like you would for tires or batteries or cans or bottles that goes on to the purchase of a bicycle that would be put into a fund that would be allowed to be used for maintenance, maintenance of these bikeways, because I hate to think of them being in the same condition as our streets are in, say, five to 10 years. So I don't know if that's possible, but I just raise it as a question.
Like you said, the grant money that we receive is for design and construction. So anything that we would do with a sinking fund would have to be outside of those monies. We are prohibited specifically for using money for maintenance in the long term. So if that's something that we could pursue, we could look at?
Well, just to think about as we go forward, because I hate to see these wonderful things just fall into disrepair, and we have more liability issues as we go forward.
Are there any other questions or comments? Or do we have a motion then to close the public hearing and approve the recommendation?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. And that passes unanimously. We have individuals that would like to speak under oral communications. Under oral communications, you're given three minutes to address the city council on any item that's not on the agenda. First is Catherine Manis.
Tonight I'm here on, for two different reasons, and first, I will start as a member for Seroptimus International of Vista. First of all, I am Catherine Manis. I'm a resident of Vista, and I live at 245 Beaumont Drive. Last week, we were told by city staff that the lease agreement with the Townsite Community Center would be changing, and possibly groups that are using that facility may be different in the future. So we just have a statement that our club president prepared to present to you in the event that the lease agreement and changes for community use does change. We'd like to thank you, thank each of you for your support in making it possible for organizations to use the Townsite Community Center. As a member of Seroptimus International of Vista, a nonprofit organization, we have especially appreciated the use of the meeting room for our annual salad bar luncheon, and of course, for your helping by serving salads and beverages. All of the proceeds of the event are returned to various nonprofit organizations in Vista to help them provide services to Vistans. We look forward to and sincerely hope that we will be able to continue this partnership that is a benefit to all of us. And now, as the previous ex-director of the Vista Townsite Community Partnership, a grassroots nonprofit organization that the city of Vista established in 1996 as a way to connect with residents living in the Townsite area, a predominantly Latino neighborhood. On behalf of myself and former employees of VTCP, we want to thank you, city council, and staff for your support of the organization throughout the years. Starting as a volunteer in 1997 and becoming the executive director shortly thereafter, I'm obviously biased about the accomplishments this organization has celebrated over the past 13 years. Mr. Lopez, you stated that you have seen more Latinos at city council meetings than ever before, and you attributed that to our work. The captain of the Sheriff's Department said that relationships have improved with the Latino community and that more crime is being reported as a result of the improved relationships. Likewise, the Vista Unified School District has said that more Latinos are involved with their children's education and taken an active role in leadership, and stated it was because of our leadership course. The programs that Vista Townsite Community Partnership offered weren't designed by accident, but by listening to and building relationships with the community. For many years, VTCP sustained itself with a resident-led Board of Directors and were successful because of the respect our staff gave to every individual that walked through the doors. VTCP became known in the community as a neutral party, and that benefited Vista as a whole. As you probably know, a couple of weeks ago, VTCP had to terminate all of its employees due to lack of funds. Not only did we all lose our jobs to funding priorities, to funding priorities, we were left with wages due. Now, I understand your funding situation, and believe us, we aren't even thinking about a retirement in the work that we do in nonprofit. All we think about is giving. Of course, VTCP still exists. I am respectfully, respectfully asking that you consider funding in advance to the organization on contracts that you approved, community development, block grant contracts that you approved to the organization for work that we have already done. to the organization for work that we have already done, and wages that were due to us upon termination. The Vista Townsite Community Partnership Board Chairman, Bill Rawlings, has those figures. And just off my notes, I want to say thank you to all of you, because I know that you have supported our organization, and I do believe that there are ways that this organization is going to continue in the future. And the amount of money that we are asking for in advance is very little. It's not even half of what you just talked about in some of the employees and getting the low end of their retirement. So we're just asking you to respect that request and know that we understand that you are in a funding crisis as well. For us, we have mortgages too. We have families that live in Vista. We want to continue living in Vista, and we want to continue serving this community in some capacity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we, as a city council, do appreciate the work that has been done by the Vista Townsite Partnership, and for those that were involved at every level, so thank you. And I'm sure Mrs. Geldert took copious notes, and we'll get back to you. Next would be Robert Kuhn.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. What my problem is here is that I was not aware that on a meeting that you had on June 23rd was going to be a meeting for the weed abatement and the charge against that, against tax property, tax assessment. So what I've done here is, I believe you have this letter in front of you. Well, I'm not going to repeat that. You've read what it is, it's pretty accurate. I'm only going to let you know some of the things that's happened here, of what I've done in order to get a hearing, and I didn't get to the city council because of the problems I had getting there. On 8/13/08, the lady by the name of Sandy Barr did a fire inspection for the weed abatement program. Now, in this fire inspection thing, prior to her, she probably did herself, but I didn't get to report of it, but I did have a fellow by the name of Mark Verro show up on another project I was working on, and they sent me a bill for that project. And on that, this date that he sent the letter was June 20th of '09. And the check that I sent back to him for the $50 they charged for me was on 1/28/09. And on that letter, I put up to Mark on the weed abatement problem on Heelo Way, let me know where I stand. I found out from him that I was named in a weed abatement problem, and so I called him up, because he was a senior fire inspector, and I knew him well. He gave me his telephone number, I called him up. Now, in the meantime, he says, why don't you go see Sandy Barr, who was a field inspector? Well, I went and saw Sandy Barr, and she, in turn, pulls out a photo of some properties, and the property where Mark told me was on Heelo Way, which affected me, because I live on Heelo Way. The thing that I showed, she showed me was from, of the wrong parcel. It wasn't on the two parcel numbers that we have listed in her invoice that she sent. And the parcel that she showed me was not this property that was on the invoice, it's a totally separate property. And I told her so. So they said, well, they'll get, they'll have a fellow by the name of Don Shellhammer, well, get in touch with me. So Don Shellhammer got in touch with me. He looked at the problems that I had in this weed abatement program that was not right. So he got the whole story, but he says, you know what? He says, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to bring out the deputy chief, he was the deputy chief, he's going to bring out Gary Fisher, who was the chief, to take a look at the problem. Now, I have two of my neighbors, good businessmen in town here, that is adjoining the properties in his knowledge of the property, because Mr. Ellis has a large home right above it, and he also bought a home next to my property for his daughter's wedding. And I was leaving him use this property, and so in turn, he knows what it looks like and got some pictures for your looking to show that that parcel was never touched, even though Sandy Barr gave me a nice example of how, what the guys saw, what they did. So I'm in a dilemma where I'm arguing with her about what is, she says, and what I see. So I, when I told them about it, I told these fellows, one of them and another fellow here, he and I have a disc together, and we both have a truck that we disc, and when weeds get high on any piece of property, we do it. It so happened on that, in 19, on August 13th in '08, the rainfall was only 4.4 and didn't equal 7.7 until later in the year when it rained, like in December. So it was difficult for even weeds to grow during that time. From the time that we would clean up, I think we'd clean up by May 31st all the time. This year, we cleaned up on March 3rd, but it was no growth, you know, nothing grew up on that. Okay, now we're going to move from that, where now I had a paste paper that was given to me by Shellhammer.
Sir, Mr. Kuhn. Is what you're trying to say to us is that you were charged for a property that was never, that was, that we did not handle?
Yes, Vance, we were charged for a property that was never done, but it really looks good. Accepting this is that when that, that she showed me that was on the wrong parcel was the same parcel that Darryl showed me when I went to visit him to get the weed abatement on the market. I have a letter here.
We can't take an action on that tonight.
No, I don't think you would.
Chief Fisher is right back there, and he would be happy to solve your problem. Chief Fisher, the fire chief?
Well, now, we met with Chief Fisher on the property with these two men here. And they showed him a picture that showed what the property is, and okay, I'll cancel out, because these are my, these are the most important thing, not what's said in council, but these are my witnesses here, and I'll, I thank you for the time, but I will talk to Chief.
Chief Fisher. Okay, Chris Muse.
I happen to live around the corner from Bob. I'm Chris Muse, and we do indeed share some equipment to cut down weeds, and we both regularly use it, and I didn't observe any large weeds on his property, and I do see him quite regularly, every week or two, usually see him. So I'm just here as a supporting witness that he's telling the truth.
Okay. Mr. Ellis?
Thank you. My name's Jim Ellis, 515 Mar Vista Drive, also a neighbor of Bob's', and I've been there about five years. Every year, I see him disc his property, two flat areas. And like he said, we did use the top part of his property for parking last year, which he kindly let us use. So it was, it was clear, no doubt about it, and that started in June for a couple months. The only thing, I do have a picture, a recent picture, I gave him a picture dated, but he put it in a safe place and can't find it. But I do, this is a recent picture, just to show you the flat areas that were done. There is a hillside there, which he didn't do, which is very difficult to do, and I understand, you know. I try to do it. I'm a little more sure-footed than he is, and it is difficult, but we did manage to do it this year because of his concerns. So that was what I wanted to share with you.
Yes, the question I'm asking is, is that the reason that you're all here tonight is that, and please verify this, is that there was a piece of property that is owned by this gentleman, and he performed the work and disced it, and then was charged for us performing the work and disking it?
That's what it seems to be.
Is that, is that the crux of the matter?
That's pretty much the crux of it, right?
Okay, very good. And like I say, we can't take an action, but what we can do is ask staff to report back to us as to a resolution of this problem. So between Mr. Fisher and the city manager's office, I think they'll be able to work with you and handle it. Very good. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Okay, and that takes care of all the oral communications and concludes the business of tonight's meeting. Are there any reports from the city attorney's office?
None this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. How about the city manager's office?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wishing you all a happy Labor Day, and also, we do not have a September workshop, nor the first meeting in September, September 8th, it's canceled. Our next meeting is September 22nd.
What if we want to come to a meeting?
We do that, Mayor. Be happy to have you here.
Okay, Mr. Gronky, do you have, okay, how about Mrs. Ritter? Thank you, Mrs. Ritter. How about, oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Ritter.
The only thing I had was, I have this unsanely, because hiring over 100 positions for the new Vista location, if you notice, they got their walls standing up, yeah. So they're going to have, they're going to have job fairs, and two, there's one in Oceanside on September 1st, and there is, in Vista, there's one on September 8th, one on October 6th, and one on October 20th, and they should open November 2nd.
November 2nd. Now, do they have a position like Walmart where they have a senior greeter?
You can put your roller skates on and do that.
I'd have to have roller skates, no, thank you.
But since you get good tips.
Well, that would be encouraging, then. Mr. Campbell, how about you?
I was going to ask if there was a job I could apply for to supplement my retirement.
It would be the roller skating wait, you know, the waiters, and they do have males and females that roller skate, and they get good tips.
I think that would ruin their business, because they don't look that good in shorts. I want to thank the council for listening to the mobility plan. It's very, very important, actually, for the region long-term, and there are no bad ideas or bad suggestions, so, Mr. Gronky, thank you for your inputs there. I know the Business Park is an important part of this. But like everything else that I can think of going forward, we're going to come out of the end of this recession doing things differently than we've ever done before, not by necessarily choice, but because of necessity, and I think it'll, Vista should benefit from the mobility plan if, in fact, we make the effort to participate, so I encourage you all to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez?
I think the economy, the way it is, and people having difficult times, I think a lot of families are, you know, I noticed that, I was down at Costco, and they're busier and can't believe how busy they are, and some of these stores are pretty busy. I think more families are maybe cooking at home and doing things that, that maybe we didn't do before. I noticed that the secondhand stores are doing tremendous business now. People are looking at things a little differently. And the comment that Mr. Gronky said about a lot of these unions, you know, they are big supporter, supporters of our communities, and they do live in our community, a lot of them, and they are important in our community, as, as any organization, a lot of the organizations here in the community do help here in our community. Let's talk about the Townsite Partnership, which you mentioned that it's important, that it's helped our community, the north, north part of our community. We all know that it's not a shadow ridge area, but it needs help. And how can we help it? You know, we are doing curbs and gutters and those type of things, and, but to see the organization go down was kind of frustrating, because they have done a lot in this community. And when we spend millions of dollars trying to develop our Main Street and our downtown area and try and bring dollar to our community, and then we, I'm not saying we're neglecting the Townsite Partnership, because we have helped them, but to, for them to go down and then, because they are an important part of our community, and having them educate the Latinos in that part of town to possibly upgrade the area, more education, they come here to this, to these meetings now to understand how our government works, they are getting educated in that way. And if we let them go, if we let it go, what happens then is that our investment here in this community, developing our downtown, investors come here and they look at, we have no programs or nothing going on, then maybe they won't invest and people then have the same attitude that they've heard over the years. And so, you know, let's continue to work and try and figure out what we can do to help and continue that, because if we don't, it will go down. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that concludes the business of this meeting this evening, so we are now adjourned until, what date is that again? September 22nd. So we'll see you all back then. Thank you.